All right, at this time, we are going to do nominations for president. I would like to nominate Dr. Julie Turner. Do we have any other nominations? All right, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter. Mr. Kilgore. Dr. Turner.
All right, at this time, we're going to do a swearing in of our new board members.
No, you're not new. She's not, no, it's me and Mr. Carter.
It's you and.
Oh, that's true, that's true, oh, oh.
All right, at this time, we are going to do nominations for president. I would like to nominate Dr. Julie Turner. Do we have any other nominations? All right, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Is Dr. Turner though? Dr. Turner? No, guess Dr. Turner.
Sure.
Um, nominations for vice president.
I would like to nominate Stephanie Anderson.
Second.
All right, are there any other nominations? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
All right, can we do a swearing in of the new officers for 2024?
I, Dr. Julie Turner.
I, Dr. Julie Turner.
Affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And that I will perform faithfully.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As president of the Board of Education.
As president of the Board of Education.
Of the Mount Healthy City School.
Of the Mount Healthy City School.
Thank you very much. I, Stephanie Anderson.
I, Stephanie Anderson.
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And that I will perform faithfully.
The duties of my office as vice president.
The duties of my office as vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Mount Healthy City School District.
Of the Mount Healthy City School District.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, the new president will take over the meeting.
Thank you. I don't need a gavel.
Yeah, you gotta have one.
Thank you. Put that over there. Okay, board members have had the opportunity to look at the agenda for the organizational meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
Some second.
Okay, that is moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore. Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Our next item is, God, that sounds loud, selection of dates for the Mount Healthy Board of Education regular meetings for the calendar year 2024. Those were sent out as a separate attachment to the board members', I don't think we have a separate printout, but, no, okay. Do I have a motion to accept the schedule as it was sent out?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item thirteen is the appointment of purchasing agents for calendar year 2024. The agents will be Dr. Valerie Hawkins, Dr. Charles Ogden. Do I have a motion to accept those purchasing agents?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Recommendation to approve the following person as purchasing agent for state and federal programs for calendar year 2024, Brock Kinzer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item fifteen is a recommendation to approve the following as purchasing agents for homeless and foster care transportation for calendar year 2024, all funds. Dr. Sarah Wilson and Mark Walden. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item sixteen is a recommendation to approve all building principles as purchasing agencies for activity funds and building budgets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Yeah, it was very prudent amount of, and it was a bunch of, Miss Spencer, the King Von is kind of mean about it, right?
No, they cannot do that.
Yeah, but I didn't know what the.
What the limit is?
Yeah.
Do you know what the cap is off the top of your head? I mean, I know there will be a budget which they'll be held to.
Yes, there will eventually be a budget where they will have that cap hold threshold, but as of right now, we're basically monitoring the span that comes in through the treasurer's office.
When it's, when you said that, can you let us know what the cap is?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Were there any recommendations made by the committee from the state?
For the current year, not as of yet.
Any further, further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item seventeen is a recommendation to approve Jana Wolf as technology purchasing agent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Did you say second? Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion there?
Same question, the cap on all these purchases?
Not as of yet.
Yeah, but can you let us know?
Yes.
And there is a district-wide cap that can't be exceeded without coming before the board. Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item eighteen is a recommendation to approve Frederica Richardson as food service purchasing agent. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion there? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item nineteen is a recommendation to establish the service fund, zero, zero, one, two, three, one, zero, four, three, zero, at twenty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
What is this for?
My understanding is that in previous years, this money was set aside for the expenses for the Capitol Conference that happens in November each year.
That probably also covers if they go to the national conference, I believe, but nobody's going this year to that, as far as I know. Yeah, yeah, I think that's actually set by law, we have to have that.
We never even come close to it.
Oh, no.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item twenty is a recommendation to appoint Kimberly A. Hughes as public records request designee. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion?
Yeah, so Kimberly A., and that's, I'm Kimberly A., I was, but I'm glad it's, yeah.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore. Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is a recommendation to authorize the following accounts. First Financial Bank for Food Service, First Financial Bank General, First Financial Bank Money Market, First Financial Bank Payroll, Fifth Third Securities and Meter Investments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Is this a change from current accounts that we have?
No, I think we just have to re-up them every year.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is a recommendation to adopt the tax budget for July first, 2024, through June thirtieth, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes the organizational meeting, we'll now move on to the regular meeting. Item one in the regular meeting is also the acceptance of the agenda for the January eighth, 2024, regular meeting of the Mount Healthy Board of Education. Again, board members have had the opportunity to look over the agenda ahead of time. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item two is the reading and signing of minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting held on December eleventh, 2023, special meetings held on December fourteenth, 2023, and December twenty-first, 2023. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as they were sent to the board members?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item three, special orders. Three A, Mount Healthy Teachers Association.
Your report today.
Thank you. B, Community. Uh, B, communications announcements, public input. Nothing. Item C, recogna- recognitions, school board recognition.
Yes, I'll go ahead and chime in here really quick, um, with Ms. Hughes. Um, obviously, I'm standing in for Dr. Hawkins. We know she has a very bad fever and feeling under the weather, so she asked me to stand in in her stead. Um, Ms. Hughes, do you want to add anything, thank the board really quick?
Just thank you for your support.
So we have some certificates that is not only what I would say, uh, standard operating procedure, especially in January, you can thank the board for their service. Um, I'll let Dr. Hawkins say her piece to you, but one of the things I would like to add um, is how welcoming everybody has been and just a phenomenal board to work with. Um, I've got to learn everybody's, um, you know, stories and how they became board members. And Mr. Carter, we were able, we, you know, we've had some good conversations over the last couple of years um, in regards to, to schooling and education and your own business. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart and, and normally I would never speak for everybody, but we're a pretty tight-knit group out of here and we obviously meet, we, we burn the midnight oil. Uh, and it's, it's very much an honor to work, to work with and for you, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Three D is a presentation by Mr. Brock Kinzer, federal grants program director, coordinator, I don't know your actual title.
I'm Brock Kinzer, I'm director of state and federal programs and I get the, and I talk to you about, um, state federal programs. This is kind of just going to be a thirty thousand dollar overview, but state federal programs is all about. This will be kind of an overview of what state and federal programs are all about. Um, and I'm certainly available, my contact information, my office number, my cellphone number, my email address are available. If anybody, after taking some time and thinking about some of these things, if anybody has any questions that, uh, you want to refer to Dr. Hawkins, Ms. Hughes and myself, I'll be happy to provide any information that I'm, that I can. So title funding, this is where, when people talk about federal programs, they're talking about title funding. All these different things can fall under title funding, whether that be academic achievement to safe and healthy students, to field trips. Uh, a lot of times, uh, the first question that building principals ask is what, how can we use this to buy food for events? Um, but we really try and meet the needs of our students and the community through title funding. And the biggest way we can do that is by supplementing the work that is done through the treasurer's office to make good things happen for our kids. So just a kind of a, a generic overview of each of the programs. Is Title One A talks about, uh, improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged. It's improving basic programs. Title Two is preparing, training and recruiting high-quality educators, and that's a lot of professional development. Title Three refers specifically to English learners, but also includes our immigrant students. And it's important to note that not all English learners are immigrants and not all immigrants are English learners. So there's some differentiations how we spend money under Title Three. Title Four A talks about preparing students through twenty-first century schools. Uh, there's three components of Title Four A. Uh, access to well-rounded education, which we're required to spend twenty percent of our Title Four money on that topic. Improving school conditions for learning, same thing, at least twenty percent. And improving the use of technology to improve academic achievement and diversity. There's no minimum of what we need to spend in technology, but we can spend no more than fifteen percent of that technology money on infrastructure. So if we spent ten thousand dollars in technology, at most, we could spend fifteen hundred on infrastructure. Idea B is probably one that a lot of people are familiar with because it's assistance for students with disabilities. So I work really closely with Dr. Wilson on this. ECSE refers to, uh, our students with disabilities, providing services for students that are age three to five, so the early childhood students. And the expanding opportunities for each child grant program is something that's kind of fun and interesting. It's an opportunity for us to really be creative and, and do some things that we might not otherwise be able to do uh, through, uh, federal programs. So just like any other funds, we do a needs assessment, we have comprehensive planning each year, and then we do the funding. And the state uses this phrase very frequently. They talk about the need to braid. When they say braid the funds, they want school districts, treasurer's office, state federal programs, people teaching and learning, special ed, et cetera, to think about the district's plan, the district's general fund, and the district's, uh, federal programs or title funds. And weave those pieces together so that we can, again, supplement what it is that we're doing for our students. So the overarching goal is to support the most vulnerable populations. Those vulnerable populations are listed up here, English learners, students with disabilities, foster care, low-income families, students experiencing homelessness, migrant worker families, justice-involved youth, and military-connected youth. So you can just look in this vulnerable populations and because of CEP, the Community Eligibility Provision, all of our students are receiving free breakfast and lunch, so that is connected to our low-income families. So almost all of our kids, right from the beginning, are included in one vulnerable population. Many of them are served under multiple vulnerable populations. I think it's really important to note that the kids aren't vulnerable. They're vulnerable, they're made vulnerable through their experiences and circumstances. A, a kindergarten kid has no control over the things that are going on in their home. So we want to make sure that we address the needs of each child and whenever we can use these pieces to create good opportunities for them, we should. And those things are removing barriers to success, removing trauma, create, uh, dealing with undiagnosed behavioral or health conditions, et cetera. Okay. So. So with this one, uh, I wanted to put this information on here. This is what I've shared with principals and with, uh, end-users, which would be administrative assistants, secretaries at the building level. And basically, anytime somebody calls me and says, "Do we have federal money to do blank?", I go through this decision tree. And basically, we need to ask, answer yes to the first three questions, or I'm sorry, no to the first three questions and yes to the second three questions. So anything that's required by state, federal, or local law, we can't supplant the money that we use from general fund by using, uh, federal program money. Would we have to do an activity even if we didn't have federal funds? If we say yes to that, we cannot use federal funds to pay for it. An example of that would be, uh, if a student with disability came in with an IEP and it said that they had a one-to-one aid. That's part, that IEP being the agreement between the district and the family, that's legally binding. Okay, have we used, have we done this in the prior year using other state or local funds? This is an idea called supplement, not supplant, which we'll talk about a little bit more. And then, once we've answered no to these questions, we come over here. Does it meet a priority need? Yes. Is it evidence-based? Yes. Does it meet the intent and purpose of the federal programs? Which I mentioned just a moment ago, those different things like improving basic programming in Title One. So once we say no to the first three questions and yes to the second three questions, we start to dig in. Okay, and really, my work is in these areas. Okay, allocability, is it in our budget? Allowability, does it meet the requirements? Intent and purpose? Uh, in, my friends in the building and in central office often hear me talk about reasonable and necessary. Is the cost and need justified to achieve program goals? Uh, my favorite example of this is that it's necessary for people to eat while they're on professional development. It is not reasonable that we feed them a lobster dinner on the federal government's dollar. And that's an example that has happened to a school district in Ohio. So they, they went to, they went to a professional development out of state and thought, this is a perfect opportunity. And they got caught. And finally, supplement, not supplant. And another way of thinking about this is adding to, not replacing. Okay, so has the cost been paid for previously with local funds? Or would we have to do it if federal funds weren't available? So these last two things are really the, the big pieces that I have to have research and evidence and making sure that, uh, we have the right things in place. Okay, so ultimately, all of these things have judgment calls. And as long as you have data and evidence, uh, that can document your process, they're, they're pretty, pretty easygoing. And I'm very lucky that I've been able to establish some relationships with folks at ODE that they didn't know when they were calling me on their cellphones that I would keep their cellphone number forever. And, uh, I take advantage of, of their kindness and they're very much, uh, available to help schools, uh, do things the best that we can. So to look at money. So title funding for FY twenty-four. Um, without going, I know that everyone can read, so I'm not going to bore anybody by going through, uh, each one of these cells. But essentially, our initial allocation for FY twenty-four was three million, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, six ninety-nine eighty-three. We got additional or carryover funds in the amount of seven hundred ten thousand, which means we have a total amount of four point seven million dollars and change in federal programs that we can use on a variety of topics. Okay, one of the items that I didn't mention is this Title One NCSSI. That's non-competitive supplemental school improvement. And that money, this money right here is only available for use at the high school. All these other funds have district components, building components, except Title One Non-Competitive is only available at the high school. So to look at this another way, what I decided to do was break this down into categories of spending. And it's cut off a little bit at the bottom, and I'd be happy to share this with Lavanda, and she can distribute it for anybody that really needs to see it or wants to see it. But essentially, what this goes through is the different ways that we can spend federal programs money. The first column being salaries. You can see a, a little over two million dollars in salaries in the district are paid for out of federal programs. That's about forty-two and a half percent of our total amount. Similarly, we've got about, almost nine hundred thousand dollars of benefits. That's about nineteen point one percent of our total four point seven million. So those are the two real big categories right away. Sixty percent of the money is coming out of, uh, salaries and benefits. And it's important to note that on this number right here, we can't use any of this additional or carryover money for salaries and benefits. Purchased services are everything from professional development to online software. Supplies, the, that can be the basic supplies that teachers use in their class, and it can be all the way up to, uh, supplemental instructional resources, like a particular book that somebody wants to use. For this EOEC, this amount down here for supplies, we use a lot of that money for supplies in the culinary department. Capital outlay is specifically purchases that are over five thousand dollars. Um, so you can see here that we don't really use a lot of money in that area. You can see one thing here in Idea B for eight thousand dollars. We have some money budgeted from there for a Braille note taker, but it hasn't yet been purchased. So similarly, in EOEC, seventy-five hundred dollars was specifically for, uh, a tool that the culinary department needed for their College Credit Plus program with Cincinnati State. So you can see, I know that's kind of broken off at the bottom, but this is about sixty-one percent total, and this is about another twenty-four percent. So about eighty-five percent of the money comes from the salaries, benefits, and purchase services categories. So just, again, I, I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence by reading to them off a slide, but just some sample allowable expenses that are up there, uh, some of the thing, this is coming from the state. And one of the things that they mentioned is supplemental instructional materials and extended learning time. Uh, that could be summer school, that could be a spring academic boot camp. Um, but right now, what we're using, the main things that we're using in Title One, we have, like I said, salaries and benefits, that's twenty-three and a half, uh, staff members. Family, community, uh, items, uh, the calendars that we print every year. We bought a camera for Bryce to advertise some of our things. Uh, we've had, uh, Horatio Sanchez came in and did a presentation to our community. That was paid for out of Title One. Uh, buying food, light, it's, the language is light refreshments, and I think the principals will smack me if they hear me say to them, "Light refreshments" one more time. Um, consulting, uh, which is instructional coaching, school leadership, uh, and then transportation pieces as well, uh, for some of our McKinney-Vento students. Title Two? Almost everything that you see up here in Title Two, uh, you'll see HQ, that's high quality. And a lot of things you'll see professional development, PD, training, PD, training, PD. So you can pretty much guess what we're using this money for. It's ongoing, long-term professional development costs, as well as individual costs, uh, whether that be like a professional organization, uh, we have, if we have a teacher that's going to the Ohio Music Educators Association, we can pay for that out of Title Two. And not just the registration, but their transportation, their hotel costs, their meals, et cetera. Uh, we've had some good opportunities this year at working with Dr. Ogden to do some pieces related to recruiting staff with some of our student teachers that we've had from Miami. So that's been a new opportunity that we've been able to take advantage of. Title Three, like I said, deals with our English language learners. Um, and again, you can see that there's supporting development and implementation of the language IEP. Most people are familiar with IEPs for students with disabilities, but there's language IEPs for English learners, as well as family, family literacy, parent outreach, and training activities. Uh, right now, we're using this for some supplemental instructional supplies, professional development, and, uh, using some assessments of our English language learners in reading, writing, and oral fluency. Like I said, Title Four, it has three components, and the first of those is that well-rounded education. The biggest thing that we do with this is support student opportunities for field trips. Okay? That's admission and transportation. We know that a lot of our students wouldn't be able to cover their ticket cost. So our teachers work really hard to find grants, and we try and provide them with the data that they need to, uh, to give to organizations that want to say, "Hey, you have a hundred percent of your students receiving free breakfast and lunch. Let us pay for you to come to our event", and then we just have to pay the transportation costs to Peterman. This is also, uh, we, uh, do a lot for our library out of Title Four as well. For our safe and healthy students, Dr. Wilson leads Objective Two, which is related to our efforts in, uh, positive behavior intervention and supports. So a lot of our work that's being done on that is through Title Four Safe and Healthy Students. Each of our elementary schools, and I, I can't speak with a ton of depth on this, but each of our elementary schools has a calm-down room and some sensory rooms that are available for students that, you know, are having a rough day, and they just need an opportunity to, um, reset themselves and, and get calmed back down so that they can participate in their education. Rather than a, a principal sending a kid out or sending a kid home, like, "Hey, let's give this kid thirty minutes in the calm-down room, give them an opportunity to refocus, re-center, and then they can go back into class." We also, for those of you who've been to, uh, graduation, especially last year, our student that did performance poetry at graduation, a lot of our performance poetry work is paid for out of Title Four Safe and Healthy, because as you heard, the young man who presented last year, there's a lot of opportunities for kids to process the, the things that they've experienced in their lives through, uh, the written word and spoken word. And then, uh, that third part of Title Four dealing with technology, again, we haven't really used very much of this this year because we are focusing on the access to well-rounded opportunities in safe and healthy students. But I'll, in a modern educational setting, there's a lot of gray area between access to well-rounded education and technology. So there are things that are technical that we have purchased, but they don't fall specifically under the technology component of Title Four. And like I said, we talk about student learning, our student-centered learning environments. It's in education destination and in our state plan. And we just think about these questions when we're talking about how are we using our Title IV money to really change the narrative and change the trajectory for our students? High-quality instruction, behavior supports, safe and healthy schools, culturally relevant curriculum programs, PD, technology. Okay? Lots of good opportunities. Idea B, I work a lot with, like I said, working a lot with Dr. Wilson on this to support students with disabilities. Again, as you saw initially, a lot of salaries and benefits. We pay for 10 staff members out of Idea B. We have instructional subscriptions and supplemental materials that are paid for. Part of, I think it's grades, it's age 12 and up. For our students, they have transition goals related to their IEP, and we do a lot of the transportation and provide those opportunities through that. And then specialized classroom support supplies. Again, just some of those ideas and resources that are making the classroom environment more beneficial to our students with disabilities. The early, again, ECSE refers to Early Childhood Special Education, and you'll see throughout this slide, ages three to five. The biggest thing that we do with our Early Childhood Special Education money is support speech and language pathology at the Early Learning Center. All of this money is spent at the Early Learning Center, and it's, right now, specifically being used for that speech and language piece. And then finally, the expanding opportunities for each child. You can see here, there's a variety of different things that we can do. But the biggest thing that we're doing right now is the culinary instructional supplies, equipment, and also, we're doing credentialing exams. So our students that are getting trained and are getting opportunities for internships and College Credit Plus, so that when they go out, you know, the dream scenario is them graduating with an associate's degree from Cincinnati State, but they'll also have, for instance, a Serve Safe Manager certification, so that they can go into a restaurant and know some of those basic things that are needed to keep customers and their staff safe. That's... Is there any questions that come to people's mind right away? Some of it, some of it can be carried over, but again, the, the federal government likes to see us spend it, because there's no guarantee from one year to the next that you'll get the same amount. So that initial amount we received this year, the 3.994, we need to spend. And then that carryover, if we don't use that money by September 30th of next year, of this year, it's 2024, that money goes away. So the goal, and I've joked with Ms. Kim and Ms. Taya, that my son's birthday is April 18th, and my goal would be, how wonderful would it be on my son's birthday to say, "You know what? We've spent all the money already. We're done for the year." So, or at least we have it earmarked. Even if we haven't had it spent, we've at least have it earmarked to be spent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, I'll share this with Lavanda, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out through Ms. Hughes or Dr. Hawkins.
Okay. Moving on, for those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave. No takers. Okay. Item four, Great Oaks Board Report.
So I did promise that we would have one this month, but the Great Oaks meeting is actually Wednesday, so this will be the last time, I promise. We will have one next month.
Thank you. Item five, Legislative Liaison Report. We have a new legislative liaison, Mr. Carter.
Yes. Mr. Carter will make an in-depth report next, in our next meeting. But just to, I guess, give a brief overview of what I read, it was really three bills that were discussed, or that are between last, you know, had some action between last meeting and this meeting. Senate Bill 91, with the, which is strengthening the handling of public funds. And more, this mostly administrative stuff. So not a lot, not a lot to report there. House Bill 68 was vetoed by the governor, and that's a big one dealing with, you know, gender issues in our school systems. And what he was wanting to see happen, he wanted House Bill 6 to be included in the language. And he, even after it was included, he did not feel that it adequately addressed some of the issues that he personally saw. For example, having operations and things being sold to students that they shouldn't necessarily be going after. So he went ahead and vetoed that, but there's some discussion on the floor about whether that's going to be overwritten. And then finally, Senate Bill 208, which was just dealing with exemptions for military service families in terms of transferring between districts. So not a lot of action there, but the big one was House Bill 68, and more to come on that. So that's my report, but next month I will do things more in order in terms of issuing a report to the board prior to the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Item six, Report of the Treasurer, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you. So Letter A, it's the Treasurer's Update. I was not able to actually type up the document, because I was waiting to receive the information from the North Coast Shared Services Alliance, which is the firm that's doing the forensic accounting. So I did receive their report late Friday afternoon, and they actually gave us another one today, and we actually met with them, Dr. Hawkins and I. So what they have done, it's the preliminary data. What they've done is they've broken it down per fiscal year. So the two biggest takeaways that they've looked at so far is in fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year 21, there are a number of positions that have been added to the general fund budget, and they're wondering if we could potentially align those charges to ESAR. But the problem with that is all of our ESAR dollars are currently earmarked with our construction projects that are happening. Right now, we do have a little bit of a balance, but we have, we had a situation back in November where we discovered that there were, there were construction charges that were being charged to a fiscal year 23 purchase order, but it was using a fiscal year 22 SEC, which is a special cost center. And this is a part of the account codes that we use, where we are coding our expenditures. And, excuse me, it was outdated, basically. So we had, when I figured out that this is what was happening, we closed the PO, and we asked Dr. Ogden to submit a new requisition for the remaining balances. At that time, we had already submitted our final expenditure reports for the year, so we had reached out to the state to see if we could align those charges to fiscal year 24. We finally got approval at the end of December, saying that yes, we could align those charges to fiscal year 24, because they came after the substantially approved date, which was March 2020. So we've not moved forward in submitting a PCR. I didn't want to do that, because I knew they were doing the forensic work, and I wanted to be fully transparent, to say, "Hey, we know that this was an issue, but we also knew that you were doing this work, and we didn't want to do any PCRs until you came back and told us what you had found." So what they did say is that they could tell that we have been cleaning up our data in fiscal year 24, so that was a kudos, that was a small win. So we are current with regard to our PCRs. We are up to date through December, and we submit them the middle of the month, for the most part, each month, the middle of the month. So we're getting ready to submit our PCRs for our expenditures that we already allotted, that we've already accounted for in our general fund, so that will help with our cash flow. So that's where we're sitting at with the forensic accounting. She has some additional work to do. She just had preliminary questions, and that's what we were able to answer for her today, but we will be meeting again. She did say that she was going to provide a brief summary, so that I could share that information with the state, because they're still wanting to know, like, what is the outcome of the forensic work that is being done? So that is the update so far with regard to how it's going with the North Coast Shared Services Alliance. And then for Letter B, I'm recommending that the board would accept the financial statement for December 2023.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, and the next item, Letter C, is to authorize the treasurer to execute blanket purchase orders in the amount of about $100,000, and execute super blanket purchase orders no greater than $2.5 million. And this will be from January 1, the end of fiscal year 24, from January 1 to June 30, 2024, and for next fiscal year, which begins July 1 through June 30, 2025. So this is just authorizing to say it's okay for us to submit blanket orders of this magnitude to cover our expenses, such as our transportation, our cleaning contracts, or electricity.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
Is this a new procedure, or is this annual, typical annual?
Yes.
Does it help us with some of the emails and things?
It will in the future when we have budgets set, because this, these amounts will be entered. So what will typically, what will happen is we will do a historical lookback next year, when we are creating our budgets, to look at the contracts that were at these high amounts, and we will be able to then plug those into the future budgets. So it's going to help us going forward, when we actually have budgets set.
Okay.
Okay?
Any additional discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report, as Mr. Dr. Ogden said, Dr. Hawkins is very ill, and so we have a substitute superintendent tonight, doing the superintendent's report.
Had to go down to AAA ball tonight, so thank you for trusting me to sit in, and we do have a national championship to watch later this evening, so I hope everybody's excited. First time we haven't seen anybody in the SEC in the finals in the Bay Area. I happen to be excited. Two 14, 14-0 teams going head-to-head. Old-school Pac-10, Big Ten, so. I also want to say thank you to the team that is here, you know, working here with everybody in the audience, listening to Brock was amazing, you know, Joe hopping up and helping, and it's just, this is just an amazing team to be on, working with Ms. Hughes and her team, and it's just, just a wonderful atmosphere. So want to take an opportunity to say thank you. Also, it is rather fortuitous, I find, that most of this has to do with my work anyhow. So when Dr. Hawkins asked if I step in, I was like, "Absolutely." A is informational items. You have a whole slew to finish out Page Five and to start Page Six of change orders. This is for the Culinary and Banquet Center. The reason there are so many is in, ranging from number eight all the way up into the 70s. So I'm referring to this when I work with Conger and Immersion. This is buttoning up the project, really. So I would say the biggest question that I've received since coming back from winter break is, "Can we get in the banquet center? Can we get in?" And it's like, it looks done, but there are a lot of nooks and crannies and PVC cutting and things of that, so we, we were very thankful to Conger for getting Chef Potter into the culinary lab, and students did start there on time for second semester, which they've really bent over backwards for us. So, I mean, when I would come up here on Saturdays and Sundays, there was always an electrician, there was always a plumber, there was always a mason, so they did, they did a phenomenal job throughout the process. Does anybody have any questions on any of the specific change orders? They're pretty self-explanatory. Like I said, a lot of smaller things, nip and tuck, and buttoning things up. Okay. Perfect. Along with that, on Page Six, I'd like to talk about a couple of grants that we received, I believe, between Friday and Saturday, which is always exciting. The first is for fiscal year 24, Ohio Attorney General School and Law Enforcement Technology Linking Safety Notification Grant for $30,000. Also, the Hamilton County Public Health Mini Grant for $35,000. And this really goes to the work of Ms. Solano and her team, and Kristin Yancey, and, and again, being here, I'm in my third now, and just being able to sit here and see grant after grant after grant to go through is just a testament to Ms. Solano's program and what she oversees in grants. For B, this is a recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the Mount Healthy City School District to participate in the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Apparently not. Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item C is a recommendation to authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Operations to purchase equipment and other items on sale on state term pricing.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Okay. Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right. Item D is a recommendation to approve Jana Wolf, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Charles Ogden, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Operations, as compliance officers for the following policies. 1422 Non-Discrimination Equal Employment Opportunity. 1623 Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. 1662 Anti-Harassment. 2260 Non-Discrimination Access to Equal Employment, Equal Educational Opportunity. 2260.01 Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Discrimination Based on Disability. 3122 Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity. 3123 Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. 3362 Anti-Harassment. 4122 Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity. 4123 Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. 154362 Anti-Harassment. And 5517 Anti-Harassment. In a nutshell, a lot of Title IX right there. Ms. Wolf and I are the Title IX coordinators for the district.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item E is the recommendation to approve Book Nook Incorporated for the purchase of 154 student licenses for high-dose tutoring to meet the Ohio State requirements for students not on track in gra- not on track in grades K through three. The total cost is $49,818.24. Also notable, this is paid for with ARP Homeless Round One Grant Fund.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant, any discussion?
Is this, like, we're just contracting out to outside company, right?
Yes, actually, Ms. Wolfe might be able to speak to this one a little bit more, but this is, this is going to be a mandate moving forward from the state, but yes. Jana, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, this is an online tutoring program where one person needs about 30 or 15 times, and we're focusing on the third graders that do not need positions for.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item F is a recommendation to accept the following donation, $1,000 donation by the Floss Family for Mount Healthy High School Girls Soccer Team.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter, any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item G is a recommendation to adopt the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant, any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Ogden.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Item eight is special orders, we don't have any. Nine, open discussion by the Board of Education, anyone feel like discussing anything? No. Item 10, Board of Education Report, the date of the next Board of Education meeting. We will have a special meeting on Wednesday, January 10, 2024, at 5:00 PM, and the regular meeting Monday, February 5, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bryant, we had, we had two motions, I'm going to go with the two motions, moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Ms. Anderson, thirded by Mr. Carter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 6:59, does that sound right to everybody?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
All right.
Yes.